I'll have three different times up there, my phone and the computer, so we'll go with it.
Good morning and welcome to the February twenty eighth County Commission meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphone and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender and Robert. Today's the last day you're gonna have to hand out listening devices. And he leaves. Oh, okay. For those of you who don't know, Robert is leaving and going to North Dakota, unfortunately. We're disappointed he's leaving, but he has a wonderful opportunity and he's been an awesome person to work with and dedicated to the community. So, thank you for everything you've done. We appreciate it. And afterwards, as a good Norwegian practice, I guess, we're gonna have cake for breakfast, so. With that, we'll go to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission meeting minutes of February twenty first. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item three is bills to be paid of five hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
To quote Commissioner Barth in his absence, pay, pay the bills.
Second. I'm glad that you guys are smiling today, 'cause if you were grumpy, we'd be here all day. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. We have reports. Minnehaw County Juvenile Detention Center report for January presentation of the twenty sixteen annual report to the Minnehaw County Office of Public Advocate and the Minnehaw County Coroner Report. Personnel actions. Item number five is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, no petition for compromise of lien. If there's someone here this morning who has something that they would like to bring up that's not on the agenda, we would be happy to hear that now. If not, we'll go to item ten. It's a public hearing to consider an application for a special event on on-sale liquor license for Prairie Pasta Inc. on June twenty-fourth at Blue Haven Barn and Gardens. Olivia.
Yeah, I received an application from Prairie Pasta, Prairie Pasta Inc., also known as Johnny Corinos, for an event that's gonna take place on June twenty-fourth. It's a wedding at Blue Haven Barn and Gardens and I've received no concerns or objections from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, or Planning Department. So, I would recommend approving.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the special event license. All those in...
If I may, it is a public hearing, so did we...
You're right. I'm sorry.
Sorry, point of error.
You messed up our schedule.
I apologize. You can still set the record.
Yep. If there's anyone who would like to testify for the bill, we would... Bill, we were in peer too long yesterday, last week. For the liquor license, it can testify now. Yes, please. You'll need to come to the microphone if you wanna say something. You just are happy that we're moving it quick, okay. Do we have a motion and a second to approve? Is everybody opposed to the license? Doesn't look like it. Are you happy now?
All for naught, I guess. Go ahead.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item eleven is to consider a motion to approve a preliminary subdivision plan as listed, four miles north of Sioux Falls near intersection four seventy-eight and two hundred and fifty-sixth Street. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Scott Anderson, Planning Director. You have indicated the location of this preliminary plan. It is approximately eight hundred acres. It's a little unusual. It's eight lots, eight hundred acres, and they are subdividing this as, in order to do some estate liquidations. So, they're rather large lots. They're not really subdivision lots. They're going to be farmed, continue to be farmed. So, they, it has gone to the Planning Commission in January. It was recommended approval. It was recommended for approval with some conditions. The applicant has met all those conditions, so we're ready to move forward with approval of the preliminary plan. This will allow the applicant to bring in a subsequent final plat and allow these to be platted and recorded, and they go on their way.
So, if you have any questions for Scott?
I do. If I may, will their, these eight individual lots, will they be able to be subdivided even more or will they have any other housing eligibility's or...
Well, there are, there are several housing eligibility's that are associated with these lots, but the way our subdivision ordinance reads is, once you, if, if you subdivide, if you do a subdivision that's more than three lots, then you need to come in with a preliminary plan. So, these could be subsequently subdivided, but as long as they don't subdivide them into more than three lots, then we just do that administratively. They submit a plat and we approve it, we review it and approve it administratively.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
Can you explain how the housing eligibility's work and how they get assigned then on these different...
Well, we work with, we work with the, well, there's one for each quarter section typically, every forty-acre parcel. And if, if the tract is, if the tract wholly contains that forty acres, it just remains there. So, the, the building eligibility's remain there. If, if, if the parcel sort of cuts through a forty-acre parcel, we work with the old property owner and they need to identify for that forty-acre parcel, if it's split, you know, which portion of the lot, which they would like the building eligibility assigned. And then we just assign that administratively in our office to that, to that parcel.
So, we're not approving any housing eligibility's that, that's done at a later time?
Well, they're already all there. So, the, the housing eligibility's remain, and if they wanna move them, they move them subsequently later with a conditionally express. And they've already, the applicant has already moved some of these housing eligibility's about eight or nine months ago. It was a while, so they've sort of moved them around already.
Okay.
And if I could, just so I understand, you said one per quarter section, but I think you meant four per quarter section.
Well, there's one per forty acres, so there's one per quarter-quarter.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Would you like to, would the applicant like to say anything? You're good? Move to approve. A motion and a second to approve?
Do we need to...
Yeah, maybe solicit if there's anyone else that wants to speak.
This isn't a public hearing.
I know, however, might be.
Setting the second reading, right? Is there anyone who's against this process? Other than Kirsten, who's just being a pain.
I am, I'm neutral, and I'm still happy, by the way.
'Cause he has cake coming. It's the whole cake thing that's keeping us all going here this morning, so.
Not gonna lie.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
And you can come and have cake with Kirsten, 'cause he's in a hurry. Item number twelve is to consider a bid award and authorize chair to enter into a lease agreement with satellite tracking of People LLC for home detention electronic monitoring service for the jail division. Mr. Gromer?
Good morning. Jeff Gromer. I'm the warden at the jail. I just bringing the contract with satellite tracking of People to the commission for approval. This is an electronic monitoring software and bracelet provider. There's really no change in the program, other than we're changing the vendor that provides the equipment and the software.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Sir, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any comments, questions? Are you happy with this?
Says approval right here.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Number thirteen, authorize the chair to sign a Tyler Technologies license and service agreement for software and implementation of enterprise resource planning, ERP, financial solutions. Mr. Wattenbach?
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach, Minnehaw County Information Technology Director. So, as you may know, we've been working with a consultant, Barry Dunn, on this process for over a year now, and we've finally worked through all the contract details. So, there's just a few items that I'd like to point out to you. The first one is just to kind of talk about the timeline for this project a little bit. So, if I can have Robert scoot me down to page six of your Dropbox PDF. We'll look at the, the schedule a little bit. So, here you will see the, the schedule, which breaks this project into several different sections. There is some overlap between these, these different modules. So, the intent is to start this project within, within forty-five days and for the first financial module to go live in April of two thousand and eighteen. We will then start the tax module later this fall and go live about May of eighteen. And then the last piece will be the HR and payroll component, which will go live in January of nineteen. So, I'm, I'm pointing this out to you, you know, so that everybody understands this isn't just a next, next finished. It's installed and ready to go. There's a lot of work that, that has to go into this system to get it configured, tested, potentially some data migration for some modules. There's still a lot of details that our team here at the county has to, to figure out and then to, to go live with these, these different modules. So, very large project that will take a lot of man-hours on, on our side. And I will be recommending engaging with Barry Dunn for consulting services. That'll be another contract that I'll come back to later with to, to recommend. So, I just wanted to point out that, that schedule to you. And then I also wanted to, if there's no questions there, jump to page eighty-four of this same document.
So, you want to have any questions for Monty?
Monty, as long as, before we get to page eighty-four, 'cause I had a question on page seven or eight. Page seven, they start talking about the, our team and, you know, who's gonna be in our team, and there's a lot of blanks there, and I just was curious about, you know, what the timing is for identifying a client project manager and a steering committee and those things.
Yeah, so a lot of that was identified as we went just even through this project. So, for example, the, what was your title, Carol? The, the executive sponsor would be Carol, Kim, myself, Carrie, we're all on the selection committee. I'm missing some other folks. Who do we have on our selection committee? Those, those are the, the core pieces that worked through this contract and were very involved with, you know, the demos and, and selecting the product. So, as far as project management, I'll be involved. I hope to have Barry Dunn involved with that project. And then there will have to be key staff from the departments for each one of these modules. So, for financials, there'll be some key staff from the auditor's office involved, Kim and, and some other folks. For the property tax piece, there'll probably be some more treasures office folks involved with that. And obviously for HR payroll, some, some folks from HR. So, specifically who and what parts, I think we'll work through those as, as we go through the project, but that is gonna be a challenge. We, we're kind of run on a skeleton crew at the county and don't have a lot of extra resources to, to dedicate towards this. So, it's definitely a risk that, that we recognize. And that'll be one of the reasons why I come back and, and recommend that we sign an agreement with Barry Dunn to help us with this project, because we don't have a lot of resources. At one point, we went over to the city of Sioux Falls, who, they implemented the Tyler Munis product a while back, and they had a lot of folks in the room that were explaining how the project went for them and, and we had, I think, three people in the room, so we, we were outnumbered. And, you know, I think that, that's gonna be a challenge for us going through this project.
So, Barry Dunn helped you work out the details of this agreement and that was helpful, they provided?
Very helpful. They're, they've got a team of, of folks that's very familiar with these kind of software solutions that, that are familiar with, you know, that, that have accounting backgrounds. They've got a lot of skilled folks that they build, bring in to these different, these different areas, and they were very helpful in the contract of knowing, you know, what language in the contract we should try to, to modify. There are some pieces where they recommended Tyler be more involved in the user acceptance training or testing, user acceptance testing, as compared to us just doing it. And if we've had issues, letting Tyler know. Barry Dunn recommend, recommended having Tyler be very engaged and a part of those user acceptance testing portions of this project. So, just their insight to a project of this nature and the fact that they, they work with them so much is very helpful to us.
In some ways, they acted as a owner's rep in the...
Absolutely, absolutely. They've reduced the risk and, you know, this, this is a very large project and most of us are, are new to this. There's so many different pieces and components and functionality to this that, that there's no one here at the county that, that is an expert in all of these. And when we engage with Barry Dunn, they have experts in, you know, the, the accounting pieces, the tax pieces, the payroll pieces, and just working with these kind of software vendors in general. So, it was very helpful.
Commissioner Kersky?
Couple of questions. What, what was the total budget for this project? Do you remember?
Hmm, off the top of my head, I wanna say one point two million dollars.
So, the seven fifty-nine?
Is part.
For the purchase, so?
Correct.
We're anticipating that contracting of Barry Dunn is gonna fall within that budget then?
The, the price range for that, depending on which option we choose, if it's full project management or project oversight, is gonna be in the range of three hundred and twenty thousand to three hundred and eighty thousand. That includes their consulting services, travel for that project.
Encourage you to take full, I don't know much about Barry Dunn. It sounds like you have a lot of confidence in them.
Yeah. It is expensive, you know, when you, you look at the size of this, but at the same time, so much of this project is about getting it configured and implemented and getting everyone here on board and making it work, more so than just the software itself. There's just so much more to it than that.
This is HR. It's payroll. I mean, we're really...
The software itself, we could put on a CD and we could, we could fling it around the room. It wouldn't be much good. You know, it's, it's really about getting it configured and working for us, so it's, it's important to...
Tell me about Tyler Technologies, and we're putting a lot of confidence and faith in them.
Yes, it is, you know, so I'll, I'll be honest with you. Tyler's not a perfect company. They don't have a perfect product. But they're very experienced in these solutions. They're a large company that I think is gonna weather, you know, any financial storms that, that may come through the industry. They have some very robust products. If there's some things that I'd be concerned about as far as Tyler goes, you know, I think they've, they've got a lot of priorities. You know, they, from time to time, they buy software companies. And, you know, that, that can be a challenge for them to try to figure out what, what components of their software they need to rewrite and integrate and improve. And so, Tyler managing those priorities is, is probably their biggest challenge.
Okay. Terms of this contract. How many years do, do we have a contract with Tyler for?
Well, so, in the language in the contract, you know, if, if we were in a grave financial situation, I think we can get out of the contract, you know, with, with a, a notice. But, you know, the intent is for this to be long-term, so the maintenance is kind of set up where it's a not to exceeds, and that goes out as far as ten years. As a not to exceeds, a certain percent increase year over year. So, it's, it's not a set in stone term contract. I found it a little bit weird how that works, but...
I think we need to express the fact, too, that doing what we're doing currently is putting us at risk also, because supporting that system and having people frankly patch it together to make it work and other organizations who use it are no longer using it. In fact, we're probably one of the...
Last? Yeah, so, you know, we, we've got a lot of different legacy applications, some of which we've developed over the last, you know, thirty years, some of which we have purchased. You know, so, a couple of, of key pieces here, the tax piece, for example, we developed that in-house, but it's developed on an older technology on the AS four hundred. So, stable, reliable, but long-term, you know, I guess, you know, we, we have concerns with being able to properly support that. So, we have some, some key staff here at the county that, that do a great job of supporting that. But those aren't, there's not folks with those skills.
And, and, you know, I get that. A lot of this stuff, like you said, is thirty years old and you're probably getting to the point where you're going down to active generations to find programmers that remember this language, so.
Be careful there now. I don't wanna start insulting anyone.
You sit in bar's chair.
But, yeah, it, it's, it's a growing challenge over time that, you know, I think we're in a good position where we're being proactive on this. There, there's lots of cities and counties that are in similar situations to us. They might be a little bit ahead of us. They might be behind us. But, you know, I, I think that all local governments that are using those legacy applications, you know, have it on their radar to evolve off of them. It is an evolution, you know. I've been here a little over six years now and I've had the question asked, well, when are we gonna migrate off the AS four hundred? It's not a migration. It's, it's really, it's an evolution. We have so many different pieces and components that are on that platform that it, it just, we have to tackle them, you know, kind of one at a time. And this is three components of dozens that are on that. But many of them, we've, we've already migrated off. We've got a few left when we're, when we're done with this. But it's, it's a process and it's just something that takes time. And it's, it's a combination of purchasing software like this one and developing. We, we've had several great successes, developing new software for human services, our attorney's offices, both public defender, public advocate. You know, so those are a couple of examples where we've developed our own in-house Windows-based software and migrated off of. Where JDC, they used to be on an AS four hundred legacy system until about a year and a half ago here and, and they were migrated to the Zerker system that we purchased. So, it's a combination of purchasing and developing software to evolve.
We're very glad you're here and leading this project, Belinda.
It's gonna take a team.
It will, but we appreciate your leadership.
The, the tax piece here, which is, you know, phase two of the project on that schedule, you know, that's obviously a core part of our business and where we get our revenue. So, these are some very critical components to how, how the county functions and generates revenue. Not, not for ourselves, but also for, for our partners as well, the city and the school district. So, with that being said, we jumped to page eighty-four. You look like you have another question.
No, no, I'm sorry. I was, I was feeling like I should apologize for having interrupted you when I did, so.
Okay, so on page eighty-four, I wanted to kind of point out all of the different modules that were there. And I'm not gonna go through them or anything, but just to give you an idea of how many modules are involved and the costs that go along with those. There we go. Yep, that's it. Okay, so, like I said, here's kind of a breakdown of all of the, all of the different modules. A big bunch of the, the cost is associated with the initial license. And then there's some costs associated with the maintenance. In the far right column, you know, they're, they're just pointing out that the year one maintenance is, they don't charge us for the first year's worth of maintenance, but that gives you an idea of what that maintenance cost will be as we move forward. So, years, I believe the maintenance starts in, after our first year. So, for all of those modules will be approximately seventy-four thousand dollars for all of those different pieces. A big chunk of that, I mean, the most expensive one as far as a maintenance item goes is the in-code tax component. I will also point out that there's a, a couple of pieces that we were really hoping would be included with this solution that are not. So, one of those items is the cost accounting for our highway department. Okay, so our cost accounting software for highway, where they say this person and this equipment and these supplies, you know, are part of this project, in order for them to keep track of that, both for themselves and for required state auditing purposes, is, is not gonna be included in this. We were hoping originally that it was, so I'm just letting you be aware that it's, that it's not, and that's something that we'll still have to work through. So, we had Sandy from Highway as a part, she was a part of the selection committee and a part of the demos. When she got through those demos, she really didn't feel like it was gonna meet their needs. And, you know, I, we, we saw where they were coming from and, and agreed with that. So, like I said, that, that's gonna be something that we'll still have to work with them to, to figure out how to evolve the solution that they have, which is again a legacy-based AS four hundred cost accounting system to something else. That may end up being something that we purchase. That may be something that we end up developing. That remains to be seen. And I've kind of let them know that, you know, this is gonna be kind of our focus here for the next couple of years and, you know, that, that project may, in some aspects, take a little bit of a back burner to, to this. Another module that, that is not included on this, that we were originally hoping would be, is the lien application. So, as you know, we manage liens for, for all the human services aid liens and for the public defender liens. All those people and how much they owe and, and all of that stuff is in a legacy-based system that really there's not vendors out there that make those solutions. I don't know why. If I talk to partnering counties, most of them have one that they've either developed on a, an older platform like this or potentially a new one. Oftentimes, they integrate in with their human services software. So, that's gonna be another module that we'll probably have to develop internally ourselves. So, just wanted you to be aware that that's something we were hoping would be a part of this, that, that's not. And the last thing, and then hopefully I'll, I'll be done, is I'll, I'll point out that if you look at all these different modules, the tax module has, has a different name. The tax module is Tyler's in-code product. That is a, a solution that they, a while back, purchased versus their Munis product, which is what we'll use for our financial payroll and HR. That's kind of their flagship product. But Tyler felt that we would be best served with their in-code tax solution, which is a little bit of an older solution. They're, you know, telling us that they'll rewrite that as they move forward. But they have about thirty counties in the state of South Dakota that are using the in-code tax software. So they're, they're confident that, that that tax software will, will fit our needs since it's functioning in other South Dakota counties. And as you probably realize, you know, most of these solutions are state-specific, how South Dakota, you know, does, does their property taxes. So we, you know, take their word for the solution that, that fits our need. And they will integrate those two different modules together. And I think overall, we're pleased with the solution that they, that they proposed and are looking forward to the next phase of this project.
Thank you. Any other questions for Monty? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agreement with Tyler Technologies. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good luck.
Thank you commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen, update and status report of the legislative session. Mr. Wilson.
Commissioners, good morning. Just got a few bills for you to look at today. One of the nice things as we get down to the end of the session is most of the pages of bills that we're tracking early on in the session have been resolved in, in some way, shape or form by this point. Either they've gone away or they're on, on the way to the governor's office for a signature or veto. On your memo here, I'm going to ask you to jump forward to the third page to House Bill eleven seventy-six, a issue that really sprang up the, the end of last week as a hog house bill that would have grabbed, grabbed some municipality and county money as legislators are, are looking to fill some funding shortfalls on, on the state end. And, and this was a, again, a hog house bill, an act to revise the distribution of certain taxes collected by the Department of Revenue and to increase certain excise taxes and to make an appropriation thereof. And as you'll remember, one of the big pieces that came out of the interim study on, on counties going into the sixteen session was a, a need for additional resources. And one, one of the areas where those resources were generated for counties was a twenty-five percent cut of the wholesale tax on alcohol. And this move, this bill as hog housed and amended would have taken back half of that money from municipalities and counties. That was up for a hearing this morning in House Appropriations and I'm very happy to report that that was tabled. So that one is, is off the table and, and that's in no small part to the effort of you and, and other, other elected officials and, and elected officials across the, the state who I, I think sent a very clear message to legislators that this money was needed and, and please don't pull this back on, on such a short notice and without proper time to, to get in front of them and, and to make the case. So that is, I would certainly say that is a victory for, for counties and municipalities. The other bill that I would, would point out to you is the next one down, eleven eighty-three. And this is really the, the product of the chief justice's work group on issues related to mentally ill in the processing through the criminal justice system. And I just point this out because it moved over to Health and Human Services on the Senate side yesterday morning and, and did pass out a committee passed out on a four to two vote. So it, it was maybe a little closer vote than I would have expected for, for such a large piece of, of legislation. But it, on the House side, you'd see it came out of committee eleven-one and, and passed the full House fifty to seventeen. So just maybe a, a little question of why the, the vote was a little closer on, on the Senate Human Services Committee. But I, I will go back and take a listen to that and see if there's anything that, that popped up. Again, the rest of the bills that, that we've been tracking really have, have resolved themselves in some way to this point. And I would open it up for your questions. And otherwise, that's what, the information I have for you this morning.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone have any questions? They have what, two weeks left to finish this? Week and a half?
I think they have middle of, middle of this full week and into next week and then veto day, that they would, would come back and, and deal with any, any bills that they may have opportunity to attempt to override.
Just one on one forty-two, Senate Bill one forty-two. I know equalization asked you to follow that. Is, if that were to pass, would that put a big burden on their office? I mean, you were talking, okay, this year, this land is used to produce soybeans and now it's valued at this. And the next year, it's used to produce another crop. So it's only valued at that. I mean, is that the intent of that bill?
That, that is the, I, I'm surprised, I'm surprised that one has gotten that, that came out of, came out of Senate, the Senate like that. And I, I, as I was looking through, doing a final check this morning, I want to go back and take a look at, talk to equalization and see if we need to, to focus some attention on that one. Because you know, it would, it would create some, some substantial changes for equalization offices here and, and across the state. And so I, what, I definitely will, will look for some more information and, and see if we need to raise the, the level of attention on that bill and, and provide you with feedback and, and get the ball rolling to get, increase the effort on that bill if we, that's, if that's their recommendation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifteen is county liaison reports. Anyone have any liaison reports? Any new business? The only thing I will suggest is, I had a conversation last week, I think it was, with representatives from Johnny Carino's about the limitation of six event liquor licenses, one-day events during the year. And they questioned why it was six. They're getting more requests evidently. So at some point, I think we need to talk about that a little bit. But it'll involve some conversations with the sheriff's department and obviously with the state's attorney and all those kinds of things. Because I think the more special events that we have out in the county, the higher our exposure is for concern. That's all I'll say at this point. Anyone else have any new business? Any old business? Again, Robert, thank you for your years of service and your commitment. We certainly appreciate all your efforts. With that, meeting adjourned and we can go next door for breakfast of cake.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to help him out here.
In a second.
Is that okay with you too? We have a motion and a second to adjourn with no executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.